I call to order the meeting in the Past Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, November 17th, 2020 by telephonic and/or video conferences and in person in accordance with suspension of certain provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act is authorized by the Governor of Texas and the State's Attorney General at 5:30 PM. My fingers are sticking. Board members present, Mr. Fred Roberts, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. Ms. Marisol Kiano is joining us on Zoom. And do we know anything about Mr. Fernandez?
He's turned in now.
Okay. And Mr. Fernandez is now joining us as well. There are no board members absent. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation tonight will be given by Mr. Kendrick and the pledges by Mr. Roberts.
President, please. While we come to you today thankful for the many blessings of life, we thank you for the much, much hard work that's being done by our teachers, and I know the stress is awful. It's also the same for our students. We just pray for them and for everything that's being done for their education, for their parents, for their kids, and for the teachers. While we thank for a district that does everything it can to make our kids successful in ways and means that that may be possible. While we pray for this meeting tonight, we ask for your guidance and direction. We pray for those that stand on the front line for us overseas and here. We know that they make the big difference of our safety in our home, and we appreciate and really admire their power and their stability. While we just pray for our nation, we're going through some tough times right now, but not with just COVID, but with the disagreement, differences we have across the nation. We just pray that you will heal it, that you would inspect our hearts, let us represent you in all things with each other. God bless. It's time to go to wait. In your name we ask it. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas pledge. Honor on the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
We're going to adjourn to closed session at 5:33 PM according to pursuant Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer, employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel and/or the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, non-renewals, and terminations of contracts for professional personnel. 551.071 to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer, and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We'll reconvene in open session at 7 o'clock PM. Convene in open session. We have a public hearing including opportunity for public comments on targeted improvement plans for Freeman Elementary, Garfield Elementary, Hancock Elementary, Palmeroy Elementary, Ritchie Elementary, Sparks Elementary, and Sullivan Middle Schools in pursuant to Texas Education Code Section 39A.057 for the 2020-2021 school year. Dr. Hickman?
All right. Well, I am sorry to be coming to talk to you about school improvement today, but I am happy to tell you that all seven of these campuses last year, which was actually their year of school improvement, their last year to have to be in that, were doing beautifully with all the plans that were put in place, and we really fully expected all of them to be out of this situation. But however, with COVID, all of that got stopped, and there was no scores, and so they had to continue in school improvement even though they had, were in, I think would have gotten out of it last year. But that being said, and it's not clicking down, let's see. So just for the public to know, we have two different types of school improvement that we're involved in, and one of them is federal. There's comprehensive campuses that are under the federal accountability system, which means that they were in the lowest 5% of Title I campuses in the state when looking at sub-populations compared to other districts. They have to be successful two consecutive years to exit that, and they do receive quite a bit of federal funding to help with that. So they all, all those comprehensive schools had their first year and were very successful. This was, COVID year was their second year, and they were being very successful. And like I said, they had to redo it this year. So the names of those schools were Freeman, Palmeroy, and Sullivan, and they were all called the comprehensive campuses. Then we also deal with the state accountability, and in the past, only the F-rated campuses had to go through school improvement, and now the D campuses also have to do that. So this is based on STAR scores, and it's a yearly system that, you know, again, last year was stopped. Again, last year, our schools Hancock, Garfield, Ritchie, and Sparks were doing very, very well. We felt like we were right on pace to outdo a lot of other campuses even. They were, they had worked hard on their school improvement, and we felt very confident that they would not be on the list again. So we talked about already the COVID pandemic. They had to retain their previous title, and they had to revise and continue to implement a new intervention plan, really, which did change because they had come along so far. So they rewrote those. So they have to write a targeted improvement plan that's specifically designed to address the problem areas in student achievement. Again, we rewrote those based on the most current information that we had. It's required for the comprehensive F and D rated schools. It's required to have this public hearing. Welcome, everybody. It requires board approval, and then we have to submit the documents to TEA. So the plans that you have with you include a data analysis, then quarterly and annual goals, then the district commitments to each of those campuses, how are we going to additionally support them more than any other campuses? What do they need specifically, and what are we going to do specifically to help them? They write their action steps for each quarter as they move along, and then we, after each cycle, we have a reflection and a planning time where we can revise the tip and the action steps. One piece there also, because of the COVID and the beginning of this school year, that was also a little bit not normal, they did not have to do the Cycle 1 because they were still in the middle of trying to write the tips. So when you see, if you look carefully through those, some of the Cycle 1s are blank, that's because the state said, okay, you can just start the actual action steps in Cycle 2. So that being said, are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How has COVID and the way instruction is delivered changed, and do we see this as a stumbling block in trying to get through all of this?
I absolutely believe that it is a stumbling block for our students. I think that it is very, very hard for our teachers, our students, and our parents to be successful and to get where we have gotten, our kids, in the past. I think that we've done a lot of training with our teachers to give them the best equipment and the best instructional strategies possible for both the virtual and for the kids who are face-to-face now. And I've been in a lot of rooms where I'm super proud of our teachers and all that they're doing under the circumstances. However, I think that it is absolutely an obstacle to student success, but we are building our bridges as fast as we can.
Obviously, it's not just in these specific schools that are having difficulties, but it's sad that these are targeted once again. And I know that, I looked through all of the plans and everything. I'm going to tell you something. I am impressed with all the work that continues to go on. I have no doubt that in good times, we will be successful. These kids will be successful, but I'm very sad that we've been put in this situation once again.
I agree completely, and I do think our kids are completely capable of academic success. They've shown that over and over and over again. This is a very bad situation right now for them to be learning in, but I do believe a lot of kids are moving forward.
Well, we've seen the results from schools in the past that have been put under the gun like this, and we've seen them excel, and I have no doubt that that's the same thing that's going to happen here. Will it happen this year? I don't know, because nobody, I don't imagine, knows, but I just want you to tell everybody that was involved in doing this, from my perspective, I am so grateful because they are committed, and y'all are doing great things.
Well, thank you. And our principals have worked very, very hard with their campus teams. We have Glenna Shields, who is an outside provider who's been walking them through this. We have Linda Wright, right over there, who has been rolling up her sleeves and sweating and doing a lot of work. Our ASCDs have guided their campuses. There's a whole team of people around each of those schools trying to support the effort.
Anybody else have a question or a comment?
I do. Dr. Hickman, I had a chance to visit with you about this earlier, and one of the things I think that we should point out too is even with the COVID, you all provided additional training during summer school for these students. So I feel like the district's gone above and beyond, and actually, we are victims of the COVID, and our teachers are just to be commended for their dedication and their continuing work. Thank you very much.
I think so too, and our campuses need to be commended because instead of allowing students to end the year last year without completing their coursework and with failing grades, they were allowed to work through June to complete their coursework in order to receive credit for their credits or to move to the next grade level. They did have to complete their coursework.
Okay. Do we have any community members that would like to make any kind of comments at this You have the opportunity. Do we have anybody online that perhaps would like to make a comment?
Board members, I'd just remind you, as Dr. Hickman said, we did not have STAR last year, and this district does not shy away from accountability, but with COVID, we know that it was not an option. We've already tested our kids with MAP assessment this fall, and we'll continue to do that in spring. One of the legislative bills is to not have STAR this year. I don't know if that'll go through or not, but as you work towards your legislative priorities, I think one thing we do need to ask for is these campuses get a fresh start, because these kids won't even be in these buildings that were there at the time of this classification. So that's just something when we get ready to do our legislative priorities that we talk about. Again, we don't shy away from accountability, but I think with COVID, it's going to change the game a little bit, and we're going to need to be really ready to support staff and students through the process as we gear back up.
Thank you.
I have a question real quick. So now that we're in the same situation and going the whole year, putting another setback, are we going to be in the same situation doing the same thing next year?
That's really up to the commissioner. He's the one who set up that they had to keep their, they just rolled forward their current status.
But with the new legislative opportunities, there's going to be discussion about that. And I really ask this board to put their minds to maybe making that one of your legislative priorities as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have public, I'm sorry, special recognition.
All right, board members, this is always a great time to celebrate our students and our staff, and as you know, College Board recognizes students each year for their exceptional achievement on college-level Advanced Placement Program exams. These students earn the designation of AP Scholar, AP Scholar with Honor, AP Scholar with Distinction, or AP National Scholar. We cannot recognize all 336 students who earned those achievements last year or recognition, but tonight, we're going to honor the scholars who earned the highest recognition as an AP National Scholar. Fifteen students earned that distinction, but only three were not members of the class of 2020. So we have three that were juniors last year that we're going to honor at this time. This distinction is awarded to students who average at least a score of four, which is very impressive, in all the AP exams they take, and a score of four in at least eight of these exams, which is really impressive. A representative from their high school will introduce their school's honorees, and we're going to start with Mr. Clint Hopper from Dobie, who will introduce our first honoree.
Good evening. My name is Clint Hopper, and I'm an Assistant Principal and Advanced Placement Coordinator for Dobie High School. I'm here to acknowledge a truly remarkable group of Longhorns that have the honor to be recognized as national AP Scholars. However, before I do so, I want to take a moment to thank the board, Dr. Powell and Dr. Powell's leadership team. The successes that you'll hear about tonight from all of the Pasadena High Schools have come about due to the material support directed to our fantastic Advanced Placement Department led by the incredible Pat Sirmus. The College Board charges $95 per exam for each AP exam. This year at Dobie, we're set to deliver 1,432 exams to 760 students. There is no way that we could have so much success bringing in this many students and inviting them to take this many AP exams if their families had to pay $95 for every single exam. So many students take three, four, or even more exams, and this would cost them hundreds of dollars from their families. However, students in Pasadena ISD pay as little as $15 per exam because of the resources committed by the board and our leadership. So tonight, you're going to hear about students that receive qualifying scores on as many as seven or eight AP exams, perhaps even more, and many of these hard-working, academically talented students would never have had the chance to receive this honor if it came at the cost of $700 or $800 from their family. So thank you, board, and Dr. Powell, for the support. Your commitment of resources to our Advanced Placement Program has tangible, measurable, life-changing effects on these students. So thank you. And of course, one of those results is here tonight. Last year here at Dobie, we had 121 students recognized as AP Scholars, AP Scholars with Distinction, or AP Scholar with Honor. Additionally, we had six extraordinary students recognized as AP National Scholars. Of those six, five have graduated and moved on to some of the best universities in the country. However, one of the six achieved the distinction last year as a junior, and he is here with us tonight. Joseph Lutner. Can I, Joseph, if I can stand up there? Joseph is part of the class of 2021. Last year, Joseph took seven AP exams and received qualifying scores in all seven. And unwilling to rest on his laurels, Joseph has registered for an additional nine exams this year, three of which he's taking as a self-study, which means that he does not have a teacher, he's not in a course for those exams, but he's doing it on his own. Beyond that, Joseph's also part of our swim team, where he practices 20 hours a week, and he currently holds one of our school records for the 200-meter individual medley. Joseph has applied to several schools, but he hopes to attend Swarthmore and eventually study either computer science or environmental studies. So please, again, help me to congratulate Joseph Lutner.
I'm Jeanette Ramirez, Assistant Principal of Advanced Academics at Pasadena Memorial High School. As you know, this year, our students had an incredible challenge, which was to take these AP exams at home, online, and from a four-hour test to a 45-minute test with every technical issue that could happen. Okay? So we want to give them an extra round of applause for doing this from home and with the support from our parents. We appreciate you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. And I don't know if you know this or not, but this is actually the last year that this award is going to be given at the national level. Of course, because it's 2020, this is an extra special group of students. First, Pasadena Memorial would like to recognize Mahmoud Sarikh, who has not yet selected his college of choice, but he plans to major in neuroscience or computer engineering with a minor in global health policy. He is currently working with the Harvard Brain Science Initiative in faculty from Harvard Medical School to create more educational resources for minorities that are interested in neuroscience, and is most thankful for his mother in inspiring his success. Next, we would like to recognize Nathan Sandoval, who plans to attend the University of Texas, Austin, to study computer engineering. He is currently the brass lieutenant for the band and is most thankful for his teachers at Memorial and his family for pushing him to succeed. And at this time, we would like for all of our parents to please stand. We wanted to recognize you, the most important people in this room. Without you, our students could not have made it this far. Thank you for being the backbone of our students.
I don't know if y'all realize how amazing those students are, but they're smart. Got some big brains, that's for sure. Congratulations.
Absolutely.
And that is all of our special recognition tonight. We wanted to make it really special for those three young men, but we'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item.
That's awesome. We have no public comments this evening under the regular section, the open session portion of the agenda. We'll move to consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I'm moved that we approved the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Personnel section, we have no administrative personnel. Moving to the certified and support personnel, there are pages in your book for information only. And then the third is consideration possible approval of the cooperative agreement with Stephen F. Austin State University for critical, I'm sorry, clinical teaching placement.
Salute.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Man, I can't get my fingers.
Go ahead and start bringing our next group to the podium. We have some presenters about advanced.
Okay, yes. And this is a consideration, what is this, for information only spotlight on advanced academics.
Want to be sure I need my plates?
So board members, as you remember, team building last year, and actually at the training we had right prior to COVID, we talked about spotlighting just briefly some of our major initiatives in the district. So you've heard about different ones throughout this time, and tonight, you'll hear about two, advanced academics and pre-K. So they have brief presentations.
While he's getting me set up, I just want to introduce myself. I'm Pam Johnson from the Advanced Academics Department. And of course, one more time, our leader, Pat Sirmus, and she's probably stepped out with our students. But we also have the very inspiring and totally unflappable Amanda Khan, who helps with our department. Is that just a phone, y'all? Okay. Well, when we were talking about spotlighting the Advanced Academics Department, we thought, well, how could we really show you the impact that we have on the district? And we thought, we're just going to talk about the numbers. And the first number I want to talk about is 50, and that's the number since COVID of virtual college tours that we provided for our students, that's both in-state and out-of-state, and public and private, knowing that our Kids to College program has since ended. The next number is 86, and 86 is the number of collegiate scholars for the class of 20 and 21. And collegiate scholars are those students who do extremely well on their 10th-grade PSAT, and then they volunteer for extra targeted instruction to improve that score, just like you saw those young men come in, so that when they take their 11th-grade National Merit Scholarship qualifying test, they show growth, and they're given an honor cord when they graduate. We had 164 students participate in our very first virtual, out of necessity, summer camp that we hosted this year, and we also had, and this is something I'm personally proud of, 180 high school students who signed on for additional academic challenges over the summer. But we don't just support our students. When we're looking at our superintendent scholars, we gave out 3,227 of these medals that go to students who are on the distinguished graduation plan. We also provide professional learning for our teachers, and I want to show you this number because since January of 20, we provided 1,712 Pasadena ISD employees with courses that were labeled either GT or advanced academics. So what do they do with that professional learning? Well, they provide support in identifying students who have needs outside of the traditional school day. They need extra academic challenge. And how do we learn that? Well, we open up a referral system, and we were very lucky that Amanda had had this taken care of before COVID hit, and we had almost 1,500 students who were referred because they were ready for additional academic challenges. But COVID hasn't stopped us. We opened up this referral system in October, and we've had over 1,100, and we checked, we have 1,275 students who they say are ready for some additional academic challenges. And what do those kids do? Well, you just saw it. I can't say enough about what just happened, but they go into the internationally recognized AP program, which really prepares our students through rigor and relevance and makes sure that they're ready for that post-secondary degree. What I'm excited about is 40% of our students who took a test, I can't say anything about those kiddos who were just here, but 40% of our students who took one of those AP tests made a qualifying score of a 3, 4, or 5. Our last highest percentage was 36%. So understand, when school stopped, we still had 40% of our students scoring that high. The next one is we had 2,550 students who took a total of 4,547 exams, and that is when we were in lockdown for COVID, and they took those from home. The exciting thing, we had 336 AP scholars that were recognized by the College Board. And how did they get there? Because a lot of our students have a gap in the opportunity, and we do that through our AVID program. AVID systems really impact students where there's a gap in their skills so that they can compete with other students. Currently, in Pasadena ISD, we have 2,624 students active in this system, including our ESLs. And if you're not familiar with what AVID does, it's, a lot of those students are first-time college students. So making sure that they understand what it takes to be successful in an academic course is invaluable. My favorite part of this presentation is when I talk about those 2020 seniors. We had 210 students who graduated through the AVID system here in Pasadena. 78% of those 210 completed at least one AP exam, and 40% either took early college or dual-credit course. And the thing that makes me most excited is this next. 63% of those 210 students were accepted to a four-year university, and that is something that we should all be very proud of here in Pasadena. But we're not going to stop there, because we've tried, we're trying to find ways to make sure that our students are challenged, and we're going to do that through the spelling bee. And of course, Pasadena ISD is going to be represented by two students at the regional spelling bee. We've worked around the academic decathlon and pentathlon, because a lot of our children hunger for those experiences, and we want to make sure that COVID doesn't deprive them of that. And then, of course, those students, we're going to continue to celebrate the AP students on their campus in a safe manner, but make sure that we acknowledge their hard work and perseverance during this time of COVID. We did have some casualties. We couldn't logistically work out how we were going to do the chess tournaments, and if you haven't, I'm just such a fan of this and think that it really helps our kiddos. The coaches have contacted me and said, as soon as it's feasible and soon as we get some solid ground underneath us, we're going to get right back to making sure that that opportunity is here for Pasadena students. And very sad that Duke University has stopped their talent identification program after 40 years. And this is the program that makes sure that our high-achieving students kind of find their tribe, the kids who think like them. So we want to make sure that we're providing that opportunity for them. We also worked really hard in making sure that we have digital platforms for our teachers. Khan Academy has been around a long time, but in Pasadena, we've bought the district access, so we can see if this is really what our students are using and our teachers, and it's broken down by campus and by teacher. Last spring, when we shut down UWorld, our platform, they listened to our teachers and actually modified their platform to meet the needs of our teachers. So we were happy to provide that. And then, when you think of our advanced, our AP science students, there's really not a way for them to do a lot of the science experiments, but Pivot has provided us a virtual way to do that. And a really good statistic is that of the licenses we've bought for our students, I just checked, 93% of those licenses are active and in use. So that's really a good investment for us. We put all of the digital resources and strategies and upcoming professional learning on a one-stop shop for teachers. I know that we have our one-stop login that we provide, but there's also one for advanced placement in gifted and talented, and then we've kind of come up with like a social-emotional learning site for our teachers. And as a school board and Dr. Powell, we want to thank you for supporting our students, because no talent should ever be left on the table, and every child who comes through a Pasadena ISD door should have appropriately challenging curriculum to make sure that they're ready to compete for the 21st century. I'm Pam Johnson, and I want to thank you for this opportunity.
Anyone have any questions of Pam?
Good job.
Awesome, John. Thank you so much. Absolutely. Okay, then let's move to consideration possible approval of campus improvement plans for the 2020-2021 school year. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Freeman Elementary, Garfield Elementary, Hancock Elementary, Palmroy Elementary, Ritchie Elementary, Sparks Elementary, and Sullivan Middle Schools' targeted improvement plans for the 2020-2021 school year. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Texas Education Agency waiver for a hybrid schedule for students in grades 9 through 12 during school-wide assessment days.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Was that you?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
So board members, this was in response to your approval of the PSAT days. We needed to make sure we applied to the state for that, so we're just cleaning that up and making sure it goes through the system properly.
Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of authorization to enter into interlocal agreement with Texas Women's University to sponsor graduate students seeking internships, externships for the 2020, no, sorry, 2021 through 2023 school years. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Marcell, you need to speak up if you have opposition, okay?
Yes, I'm good. I've been saying aye.
All right. Okay, consideration possible approval of agreements between Pasadena Independent School District and University of Texas at Arlington for a school-based student nursing clinical rotation. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Now, we have another for information only spotlight on pre-kindergarten, and Rebecca Terry is going to present this.
This is going to be short and sweet, because that's what pre-K is. It's sweet.
It is.
Hi.
Hello.
It's been about a year since I've seen you. It's good to be back. So it will be short and sweet, because our children are short and sweet. Oh, so here's our pre-K update for the 2021 school year. So first of all, we're going to celebrate, because we are total full-day pre-K for four-year-olds in Pasadena ISD. And we could not have done that without you guys. So big celebration. We're being happy, and we're kind, and these are some children from Turner Elementary celebrating Red Ribbon Week. So our next one. So we have some long-term goals, and we're getting there. So four-year-olds, full day, we're there. We want them to be enrolled at their home campus. We're almost there. We have a few kids that we filled up at some of our campuses, and so we spilled over into the other campuses. But most of our kids, I would say, maybe 91, 92% are at their home campus this year, and we're happy about that. And our other long-term goal, which we did not think we would achieve for a while, was to have online enrollment. And, well, with COVID, it allowed us to achieve our goal this year. So we went online enrollment, and we could not have done that without a lot of help from Alan Brown and Jamie Burt and her team over in Student Services. They did the work, and I'll take the credit for it. So looking at our classes from last year to this year, last year in 2019-2020, we had, still had 14 half-day classes, seven teachers, 14 classes. Most of those classes were half-day English, half-day Spanish. So those teachers were teaching in two different languages, and we had 104 full-day classes. And this year, we are currently at 116. We had 120, but we lost four teachers to other grade levels because, my next slide, of our enrollment this year, we had hoped to have 2,600 students. As of today, we have 1,906 students. We are still enrolling. I put two different percentages up here. I know you guys are looking at, where are we based on what we had projected for enrollment? So we're at 73%. When I talk to other school districts, who are all talking about, where were we based on where we were last year? We're at 79%, and that is big, because other districts are not at that percentage yet. So we're very happy that we have 79% of the kids that we had last year. Full-day pre-K makes a difference. We've known that. I've brought data to you many, many years. This shows from last year. I just pulled up Produces Letter Sounds and Make Sets to 10. This was at the end of the third nine weeks. We did not turn in data at the end of the fourth nine weeks, and it was really good. So if you look at the orange, that's half-day. If you look at green, that's our full-day students. And notice, if you can see the little bitty letters, is that many of our full-day students are actually above level on some of our benchmarks at the end of the third nine weeks. So that makes us really happy. And this is my last slide. It takes a big heart to show little minds, and we have lots of big, to shape little minds, and we have lots of big hearts here. And it's taken us six, seven years? Six years, seven years? I can't remember. It's kind of a blur. About six or seven years to get to full-day pre-K, and we could not have done it without you guys and your support. So that's what I have to tell you. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Great presentation. I know that we're doing great things with those little kiddos. It's hard to imagine four-year-olds being in full-day school, but, and so y'all deserve an extra.
And in full-day virtual, too. I will tell you, this is not part of the presentation, but I did just finish up a workshop with our new teachers today, and my two pre-K coaches, and y'all should be very happy of our pre-K teachers. I mean, they are hanging in there, and having met with the principals and AP, assistant principals last week, one of the things that they kept saying is our pre-K looks kind of like it should look. So kids are playing, and they've got their mask on, but they're talking, and they're writing, and they're reading, and we're really happy with our program.
That's awesome. Thank you.
You should be very, very happy.
Okay, let's, we have no new policy at this time, so let's move to the financial, oh, I skipped over student achievements, and there's several pages of student achievements in the book, advanced placement scholars and National Merit students, and we are so proud of each and every one of those students. It is amazing the awesome job that they are doing, and they represent Pasadena extremely well. So now, we're going to move to the financial section, and we're going to go to budget amendments for the month of October.
I move approval of the budget amendments.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration possible adoption of board resolution providing for a one-time employee retention payment of $1,900, oh, I'm sorry. That was a little bit, okay, $1,900,000. Okay, who was that? I'm going to say Jack Bailey. Okay, Jack. Motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it. This is a little bit of money, but a great, big thank you. We know what our employees have had to endure since last March, and I wish we could do 10 times this. It is, but it is with a huge amount of gratitude and a little bit of payment that we say, thank you, thank you, thank you.
So board members, I'll send out the email tomorrow morning about this, and of course, well wishes for their next week off, that they desperately need to rest and recharge and relax, but this will be very welcomed, exciting news for them.
They'll get this December 3rd.
Yes, sir. That's awesome. Okay, consideration possible approval of interlocal agreement with Harris County and Pasadena ISD for November 2020 through November 2021. This agreement will allow Pasadena ISD to participate in the Project 10 Million program. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Okay, moving to the operations section. Consideration possible approval of the design development phase for the new administration building project. And we have a presentation by Mr. Bunchwa.
Thank you once again for allowing us to work with the district on this project, and of course, thanks to everybody, and too many people on the list to thank everybody, but obviously, Dr. Powell and project manager Shawna Gagnon and Kevin Foroff have been right in the middle of it. I'm going to say Dr. Hickman, too, because she's sitting so close to me and would get mad if I didn't, so. Just want to pass in ISD. So again, this is a result of a lot of work by a lot of people. We're a little bit condensed here on our format distorted, but I think it'll still read pretty well.
Get a little closer to the mic, if you would, Charles.
Okay. I was trying to not block. We're a little bit condensed on our format here, but I think it'll still work. I think everybody's familiar with the location of the project on what, until a very short time ago, was Pansy Street, that apparently is now Mickey Gilly Boulevard. So just north of Fairmont Park, everybody's reaction is the same as mine, just north of Fairmont Parkway. And you can see, here's our site here. You'll remember, it's a very challenging site for a couple of reasons, one being the pipe, the oil pipe and the gas pipeline that goes from the northwest corner to the southeast corner, and the other being, it's just generally a fairly tight site. And you may recall that, I'm sorry, I got to get somewhere over here, you may recall that we had an agreement in place or understanding with the city of Pasadena about stormwater detention about five years ago when we first started on this project. Well, they no longer do off-site detention, so we had to regroup and fit our detention on the site, which means the site is really cramful, and you can see you've got the stormwater detention in two different ponds here, connecting the drains out onto Mickey Gilly Boulevard. But you can see parking just throughout, and including some parking in the back that will probably be used for fleet vehicles, including a lot of police cars and other vehicles like that. The floor plans are rotated about 45 degrees, counterclockwise from what you saw on the site plan, but this is our main entrance here on the first floor. Right here, we have a little reception slash security station here, so you have the ability to restrict who comes and goes into the building. And all of the, there's a three-story section that's about like this, and in this area in here is just one story. All of the three-story section has cars that goes all the way across the building like this. And you come into the main entrance, and there's a main lobby here. And then, what we've done is, for the most part, we've put the departments and the functions that need to be near the entrance for the public and have a lot of visitors on the first floor and near the first floor stairway, and I'll hear the stairway. This is the boardroom right here. It seats, and its configuration's shown, about 120, maybe 118 people. You'd probably set it up a little more spread out for maybe 100 people for a typical board meeting, if you needed to. We also have three training rooms over here. These are movable partitions, so you can reconfigure that into larger and smaller training rooms. We also have a little smaller training room here that has operable glass partitions over here, so it makes it toward this space can also so it makes it toward this space can also be used for overflow, for instance. I know you have a lot of occasions here where you have a crowd in the lobby after their particular part of the session's gone over. You can now encourage them to move into this, uh, area here that won't be as, as disruptive to your, to your meetings. The superintendent's office is, uh, in the red here. Uh, it includes a board conference room here with direct access to the boardroom, a superintendent's office here and the rest of the, uh, group, and there's a large storage room here for the table and chair storage for the boardroom. Associate Superintendent's Campus Development is in this area. Uh, Human Resources obviously has a lot of outside visitors. It's in the blue, uh, entrance over here. This is where they come in, and then this is where the testing and the badges are done in here. Tax Office is located at the east end of the, uh, southeast side of the building and has its own separate entrance here. People can come in and pay their taxes and go back out. Uh, they have the ability to come in here and use a restroom, but they have a set of doors. There's a set of doors here that prevents them from going into the rest of the building. And they are, for security reasons and other reasons, located right next to the police department. And the police also, in addition to their layout here, they have a new dispatch room and training room, and they have direct access to the parking lot straight to their, uh, vehicles. Also on the first floor is the communications and the printing department, also with direct access for loading on the, uh, to the rear of the building. The second floor, again, uh, with the same strategy of keeping, uh, things that are visited by school district employees and public, uh, near the, uh, main entrance here. At the top of the stairs and top of the elevators here, we've got the workers' comp group, followed by Student Services on the opposite side there, and then, I don't know if we need to go through all these compliance, uh, accountability, uh, and research and administrative service for that group there. It, uh, the southeast corner of the building, truly the southern corner, uh, we have a large break room for the entire building. One of the things we focused on in this project is getting all of the conference rooms and break rooms to the extent possible, accessible by everybody in the department, trying to eliminate all the break rooms in individual departments to, you know, have a, I guess, greater sense of community in the building and also make everything towards usable by all the different people. So there's, there's plenty of spaces to use.
How big would you say that is?
Uh, it is, uh, almost two thousand square feet, I think. It's, you're not, you couldn't fit the entire, uh, uh, three hundred and fifty or so employees in there. Well, you could come probably two shares you could.
That's good.
And we have the various business departments here, including purchasing and payroll that often, again, have outside visitors and are very close to the elevators and these stairs. And then, of course, uh, business and finance here. Grants is also on the second floor, uh, as is financial compliance. We have a lot of, these are called public spaces on our drawing. These are like training rooms here and here, and some general storage areas here and here. On the third floor, again, we know Special Ed has a, uh, fair number of outside visitors, so their entrance is located right next to the elevators here. All of curriculum, curriculum instruction is on the third floor. Uh, see the rest is special education and the different components of the Special Programs Department. Across the hall, we have the LA and bilingual, and then social studies, math, intervention, and, uh, fine arts, and then, uh, across the hall, we have the administrative portion, curriculum instruction. In other words, Dr. Hickman's office up here, and then all of her direct reports right there as well. Again, a lot of common meeting rooms and spaces, uh, and also a fair amount of, or at least some ability to expand, uh, in most, most of the departments. Building itself is mostly tilt-up concrete on the outside. It serves both as the skin of the building and as structural component, uh, for, for the perimeter of the building. We also have metal panels, uh, two different types. One of them are the blue panels that you see here on the stairs on each side of the building, and then also, uh, these that are brown in this drawing are actually look like, oh, dark wood. We have sun shades above all the windows that are not north-facing, uh, and it's that red strip you see here. The renderings of the building, this is the, you can see, this focuses on that, uh, dining area, staff dining area here. You can see the stairs here. Each end of those corridors that run through the, uh, main part of the building have, uh, windows there that have, so you have natural light at each end of that corridor there. You can go over into the office area, this is the tax office down in this area, and then the other offices on the second and third floor. Moving a little bit down, uh, the way here, you start to see Human Resources Department over here. Uh, back to the dining area and the stairs over here, just a different view of that. This is a corner looking from the superintendent's office, this is the superintendent's office here, looking back towards the building. As we get to the main, the main entrance, uh, you see the solution we have for the, all the plaques out here. We have these different little pylons here that we're gonna mount all those plaques on, and some of them have benches here that allow for, uh, people to come out and eat lunch or do, uh, even meat out there if they want to. Uh, as we go towards the main entrance here, obviously the flagpole and the plaza are planning in, right in this general area in front is a little bit limited because we're in the pipeline east, and so we can't put tree. We're limited to just shrubs and that, for the most part, in that area. And as you, you can see here, as you get towards the entrance, we have a, uh, stone-like, uh, tile here. It's just to help to warm it up and be less cool than the tilt-up concrete panels. Coming to the lobby, uh, this is a view, uh, from the main entrance towards the stair, stairs. Uh, we have two sets of stairs go, going up, and this goes back to the first floor. You can see it right now, it shows them glass doors closing it off. So during a board meeting, or some people would not be able to get back into the office. We have the same at the top here, the elevators are right beyond this. Uh, we have a LVT wood floor. This is a carpeted area, not sure yet if that's gonna be carpet laid in or, uh, rug, but that decision will, will come. Uh, and you can see we have graphics on both of these walls. Uh, these, this is not necessarily the final graphics in this scheme. What we have is, on the right side, we have, uh, a current day map of the area with images of the school district and things in the area, uh, in today, and then on the other side, we have a historical map and historical images, uh, there. And you can see at the top, we have these wedge-shaped clouds and then some, uh, circular light fixtures in the center. The, uh, view back towards the front of the building, you see that reception security desk there. This is, it looks a little misleading here. That graphic is not actually on the, uh, glasses on the opposite wall. And you can see we have these portals at all the entrances in the main, uh, lobby here. At the stairs, you see the portal to the Human Resources and Training on the left, the stair going up. And from near the top of the stairs, this gives you a better view of that room down here, that overflow room right there and these portals, and you can see this, these windows up here into offices, and these are out to the exterior. Pointing out that you can see kind of an entrance portal here, and this is the one going into Student Services. That's typical throughout the building of all the department entrances. Uh, each, each department has its own portal, it signifies the entrance to that department. Start to look towards, uh, the boardroom a little bit. First of all, you see the portal goes into Campus Development, and then that, uh, stone-type, uh, material over here. Another logo here that's backlit. You can see the backlit feature a little bit better here. As you get into the boardroom, these two spaces here would be where the, uh, projection image for the audience would be. Uh, we also have places for screens over on the sidewalls, uh, the board table up at the front. And there's just a closer look at that. The board table is basically two different colors of wood plastic, wood image plastic laminate with a solid surface top. On the side, you can see here, we have, uh, panels of different depths. Some of them plastic laminate panels and some of them acoustical panels over on, on both sides. And just a better look at the board table itself.
There's not a step up on this board?
There, there is. Uh, there's a, on the outside, uh, if you go through that door right there, there's a little ramp that goes up, uh, six inches, and there's also a ramp inside the boardroom over here, and then the step, if you extended this table down, there would be another step over here. It is a six-inch step.
It's wheelchair accessible.
It is wheelchair accessible, of course, yes.
What is the estimated budget on that?
Uh, the budget is twenty-seven million dollars.
And that's how much it cost? Twenty-seven million?
Yeah, I don't recall the exact number.
Two oh three?
Two oh three, that sounds about right.
But that was a while back.
Yeah. The, the animation is just kind of a, a repeat of all the images you've already seen. See, going past the pylons there and then into the main entrance.
And how many total square feet?
We're at one, I think, one nineteen right now on the main building itself. And then into the lobby. See the graphics.
Everyone wants us to go out and bid?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
April or May for what?
Bids.
Bids, okay. Charles, I have a question. Um, are you, are you about done? I don't wanna interrupt your presentation.
The only thing I have is just gonna walk into the, and you've already seen the images of the, uh, of the boardroom, and then I, but I can skip past, uh. I just have the, the schedule and the budget, and you just can answer the question, uh, right now. Things blinding me. Uh, you can see that, uh, you know, we're planning on issuing for bids in the middle of March, plus or minus, and awarding the contract at the May board meeting near the end of March.
Awesome. Um, how much, how much experience have you had with tilt-up concrete?
We've had some. I mean, we've done schools with tilt-up, and we've done, uh, maintenance and warehouse buildings. It is, if you go around town, it is kind of the preferred method these days for these immediate low-rise office buildings up to three, four, five, six stories, uh, which just turns out to be, uh, considered the most economical for that reason.
As far as, um, do you have issues with, uh, walls cracking or anything like that?
Not typically. Uh, I mean, concrete cracks, but I mean, you know, most, there's enough reinforcing in there that, A, it's not a structural issue, and, uh, on the interior, it'll all be covered up, and on the exterior, uh, if there are minor cracks, it'll be covered by whatever coating you have on there, but certainly don't, won't be a structural issue.
Okay.
You see, you see a million of them all over.
Yeah, I know. I, in fact, I intended to talk to my husband. He's done some work with tilt-up concrete, but I just wondered, I was just curious if there was an issue. Because it was concrete, there was an issue with cracks, and, you know, we don't want a new building with a bunch of cracks around.
Uh, there is, there is an, uh, no major issues that I know, you know, as long as it's done properly. Uh, I, I think if you go around town, you see tilt-up buildings on every type of building, and I don't think you see very many that have had a, you know, either a aesthetic blemish or certainly not a structural failure.
Okay. Well, I, I know it's a lot quicker to put up, uh, tilt-up walls rather than-
Right.
-than regular construction, but I just, you know, my concern is, obviously, we've got plenty of cracks in this building. I just want it to, to look like a new building for a long time to come.
I agree with that, me too.
How deep would y'all go in your peers for, because of our gumbo?
Well, I don't, we don't have a solid report for this specific site, but most of the jobs in this area end up being eight or ten feet. Uh, yeah, you have to remember, when it comes to peer depth, it's not necessarily the, the depth. What you're trying to do is you get, trying to get it in the right strata.
Yeah, we're, we're going to-
Right, you gotta find that clay and then have it bear on that clay. It does, if you, you could put a hundred feet deep, but if you're not bearing on the clay strata, it's just gonna sink, so.
Charles, the exterior part of this is stone. I guess my concern is, we have some, a school that we have an exterior that's like stone, and it stays filthy all the time. Is there some type of a preservative that can be put on this stone? Are we using a type that's not susceptible to staining?
Well, the, uh, the material we're showing now, and we're still having some discussions about what that final material is gonna be, but the material we're, uh, showing at this point is actually a tile, uh, and that's, it's got, that tile has got some marble in it and some other thing. I don't think that'll be a big issue. I'm not gonna say that it's never gonna need to be cleaned, uh, but I, I don't think it's gonna, I wouldn't think it's gonna be a huge issue.
Question on the, uh, if you need it. Okay, this is tilt walls, and the exterior of all the walls are gonna be, I heard stone just now, but is, is the wall gonna be-
No, it's, the only exterior part that has, uh, stone is right at the entrance, on either side of the entrance.
My question is, I know we have tilt-up wall out there at Snyder's, and, and other than that-
Malillo.
Well, I must say, Malillo. And I've gotta tell you, that's probably the ugliest building in the district. And I remember, and I remember the architect that designed that building. He's no longer here doing any business, and so we don't have that option. I mean, we don't have, what, we, we cannot see any more of those problems in the future, I wouldn't think, with a tilt-up. I'd hate to see this building look like that building out there. Let me be straight up with you. And so this building, you're gonna tell me that this building's not gonna look like that building, correct?
I'm not that familiar with those buildings, but I'm, uh, confident that, uh, we're gonna be happy with this long-term.
Okay, well, if you get a chance, go out there and look at it.
Okay.
CTHS, right? CTHS is also tilt-up.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
And so I think there were some, at the end of Malillo, if I remember correctly, there were some budget cuts that were made. So it looked much different than even Snyder's.
Yeah, Snyder and them were the same school, and they had budget cuts, and that's what, yeah, that's just, and that's a sad situation.
It is, it's very sad.
Whether it be an alternate to do something else, or there, there's no way of doing anything.
Well, that's a, that's a pretty tough alternate, uh, because it impacts, you know, not only the skin of the building, but the structure on the perimeter, but I, I don't have an issue with going to a different system. Uh, I mean, ours, you know, this was largely a financial decision, uh, you know, because it's both quick, uh, which saves you money and, you know, cheap in other ways. And like I say, if, if you look around town at the office buildings, and that's what this is primarily, uh, the office buildings being built around town that are approximately the same size, same height, you know, virtually every one of them is tilt-up, and there's a reason for that.
What's the, uh, what do you estimate completion time?
Well, we have six, well, let's go on now. We have sixteen months, uh, planned, which would put us, uh, I can't quite see because of those, uh, the end of August, I believe, of twenty twenty-two. Uh, in the, in the meetings we had, uh, with, with regard to moving dates, I think, uh, I guess we're showing September. Uh, the moving dates, nobody wanted to move, uh, right before the start of school or be in the moving process of school was starting. Uh, I think we'll beat that sixteen months. I think that's, uh, you know, just a safe schedule, uh, but of course, as you can also see, we have the move-in staggered over a ninety-day period now, so we would have the ability to, if we got finished early, maybe some people could move and, and the others could wait till after school started.
We have a plan that once occupancy is given, Troy will move. He may be able to go by himself for a day or two, but they-
Well, he has his name on an offer.
Yes, he does.
Some people don't. I guess, some, y'all know something we don't?
No. But he'll start moving departments. Some people have very busy times at that time, obviously, whereas others may be, um, more able to move, and then we'll slowly transition a department at a time, even partial. a department at a time, even partial departments at a time. We may can bring some officers over there and leave some here, for example. Or finances, that's a very busy time, closing out budgets, so they may have to wait to get that work done, and we may move printing, for example. So it just depends.
This has nothing to do with the building, but did the city do any consulting with the district before they changed the name of the street?
In my conversations, we were not made aware until Shauna sent me an email, maybe three or four days before the city council meeting. It was late October when you sent me the email, when I spoke to the mayor. He wasn't aware that's where we were putting our new building. So he was surprised that that's where our location was.
Charles, I want to thank you for the, for the design. It's exciting, obviously. You know, I've been through board meetings at the old Guidance Center and now here at this facility, and pray that I'm able to be in the new facility as well. But y'all have done a tremendous job. It's exciting. You go through there and you go, wow, you know, is this for real? And so, thank you, thank you and the team for the work that you put into this. I really appreciate it.
Well, the rest of the team would have been here, except for the COVID restrictions.
I understand.
Although I don't think they were too upset about me coming to the board.
I do have a question. I mean, on the printing, is that going to have a loading dock so they can unload?
It's not a loading dock, but they have a loading door. We don't have a depressed loading dock. And, you know, you're talking about like for, we don't have really the layout to accommodate an 18-wheeler, but we do have room to accommodate their trucks. But they, they're going to have a.
Yeah, for paper. They have tons of paper.
Yeah, and they have a.
Copy machines and stuff.
They have a double-door size opening right at the back there, and they, we're having pallet racks and all, where they just roll the paper in right there. Also getting away from, right now, I know when they do big printings, I guess at the beginning of the year and all, they end up stacking the stuff in the hallways and all, and we have a space for them to stage all of that printing, all those printing jobs now. And we work very closely with Art, and basically, to be honest with you, he basically did the layout of the equipment. So.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you very much. And I know that the people that are the occupants in this building will be very grateful, if they can just be patient. It's coming. It's been a long time coming, but it's not coming a day before it's needed. So we certainly do appreciate the hard work that you put into it, your staff, and the information that's been provided by our staff. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna, do I hear a motion for consideration, possible approval of the design development phase for the new administration building project? Marshall, oh, I'm sorry. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration, possible approval of the sale of a sidewalk easement to the City of Houston located on the east property line of the new maintenance operations and warehouse facility property in the amount of $1. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration, possible approval for changes implemented by the Texas Department of Public Safety for PISD commercial driver's license third-party testing. So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, was that you, Mr. Bailey?
It was.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion.
Sounds like a good deal for us.
Yeah.
A lot of time-saving.
Yep. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Construction update? Any comments or questions? Or none? We'll move on to the miscellaneous section. And it's my understanding, we have a public comment this evening. Is that, is Ms. Yan Ra Bay here?
Yes, here I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. You have five minutes and, three minutes, I'm sorry, three minutes. And I'm going to ask, Mr. Fernandez is going to time you, and he'll hold up one finger when there's one minute left.
Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Powell. My name is Yan Nguyen Ra Bay. I was a teacher at Pasadena High School for 14 years, and I live in the school district. I am speaking tonight to inquire about what became of the school start time review committee headed by Dr. Troy McCarley that was formed in the spring semester of 2017 to review the high school start time at 7:15 a.m. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Our high school did not always start at 7:15 a.m. In the 1980s, Pasadena schools started at 8:30 a.m. Then in the 90s, at 7:50 a.m. In 2007, it was changed to 7:15 to save $3.2 million on buses. At the time, we didn't understand the health impacts that would have, that this would have. But now that we know better, we have a responsibility to protect the health of our students. All major health organizations urge a start time of no earlier than 8:30 a.m. This includes the American Medical Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Centers for Disease Control, and many others. They all recognize the irrefutable research showing that teens naturally have a later sleep cycle and are simply unable to get sufficient sleep when school starts before 8:30 a.m. I would like to know if the surveys drafted in April 2018 were ever sent to parents, students, and faculty members, because I did not receive any news before I left the district in May 2019. If the surveys were sent out, where can I find the results from these surveys? Now, it is even more important that students get the nine to 10 hours recommended sleep during this COVID pandemic. And why is that? Accordingly, according to the Sleep Foundation, sleep is a critical biological process, and the truth is that is always important. When confronting the COVID-19 pandemic, though, sleep becomes even more essential because of its wide-ranging benefits for physical and mental health. Sleep empowers an effective immune system. Sleep heightens brain function. Sleep enhances mood. Sleep improves mental health. Experts agree that getting consistent, high-quality sleep improves virtually all aspects of health, which is why it is worthy for our attention during the coronavirus pandemic. A survey given at Pasadena High School indicated that less than 10% of students get the minimum of eight hours of sleep. We need to apply the science of teen sleep to address this issue of chronic sleep deprivation for our students' health, academics, and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to set the date for our next regular meeting, suggested Tuesday, January 26, 2021.
What was that, January 26?
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion has it. I mean, as have it, motion carries. No further business to come before this board. This meeting is adjourned at 8:16 a.m.